City Council for Monday, April 4th, 2022. Our invocation this evening will be offered by Morris Heide, wherever he went. Oh, there he is. If you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our eternal heavenly Father, it is in the name of Jesus Christ that we come to you this evening at the start of this meeting. We pray that the deliberations, the discussions, and all the things that transpired this evening may be guided by your Spirit as we seek to make a difference in the lives of the citizens of this community and bring quality to life, quality of life to the citizens here. So we ask that your Spirit would guide and direct us, be with this, be with those deliberations that take place, and may you rule and overrule on all the things that we do in this city. We ask this humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Huff.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
DeLucy.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Ware.
Here. We have several citizens who requested to speak to the council this evening. The first is Tia Tualla, who requests to speak to the council regarding thanking the city council and staff. Tia, please come forward.
Madam Mayor, I am so grateful, councilors, councilmen, and obviously all the members of the City of Independence. I am so thankful, and it was mentioned, all things are dedicated today because we prayed about it. And I'm here to say thank you, thank you, for the great work that you have done, all of you, whether you're coming, going, or whatever. The Lord has a reason for all things, and I am so thankful, so thankful. I know I helped the city for 15 years. I myself am spreading my wings to fly to another area. But I am so great and thankful because all the knowledge and wisdom are all here. And it's so sad to see some of us move, but sometime it's better. Anyway, Madam Mayor, I'm so grateful. I'm grateful. I thought you were the janitor. He was the first to be in here. I was the second. I'm so sorry. See, I saw it wrong, but you're a great man. Because you were the janitor, you could be God next. Anyway, I'm so thankful, so thankful. Not enough words to give thanks to all those who are here, and especially to the citizens, to the citizens of Independence. God bless all of us, and may he answer your petition this evening as we present it to the great ones that are in the place of helping us accomplish our goals. And I want to thank everybody in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Our next speaker is Tracy Warma, who wishes to speak to the council to oppose the development of McBee Acres.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Tracy Warma, and I proudly reside at 1600 North Dover Street, 64058. I support community and neighborhood development, but at this time, I cannot support the residential development in Salem East proposed by McBee's with Forza Management. I'd like to address the lack of broader communication for this community growth project. A friend of mine, who lives in Salem East, had told me about this because she had seen another Salem East resident post a picture of a flyer in a neighborhood community group. This whole time, we were confused why my friend did not get a flyer as well. On February 24th, during a snowstorm, only seven community members, including myself, showed up for this meeting at Forza Management. We asked why this proposal was not communicated more broadly, and we were told these flyers were only distributed to residents 100 feet out. And maybe I heard it wrong, but it didn't make sense to me. 100 feet is not very far. It's a big project, and it's a big deal. I'm in the neighborhood right next to Salem East, and for better context, I am closest to the quick trip that everybody talks about where the truckers park on Bay and Lexington Avenue. Another thing I'd like to address is the negative information that I'm seeing. Before this, I had no idea who the McBee's and Forza Management were, so I did a simple Google search, and I also searched these names through my community groups, and any mention of McBee's or Forza Management usually brought up negative content. Currently, all of the current former tenants were fired up, and they expressed a lot of frustrations, and they were being ignored when they reached out several times for maintenance requests, or just couldn't get a hold of them for any, whatever reason. And I used to be a renter myself, so I'm pretty guilty of bugging management to fix an issue, and when it was ignored, my mindset was, oh, well, I'll be out after my lease, and it'll be somebody else's problem. And it makes me very leery to welcome this project because it seems like it was sneaking in, and those negative reviews did not help much. McBee Acres is not going to be immune to property issues down the road either, and there will be newer properties, and eventually McBee Acres will also get run down from unresolved issues, unresolved maintenance requests, like the current rentals they manage today. My home is my biggest investment, and possibly speaking for other neighbors as well, our property is not just any regular investment where we toss money in, hire somebody to possibly take care of it, and then move on to bigger, better things. Our investment property is our home and our own space to maintain as best as we can, and we do not want to see our community get run down by unkept properties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Wilson, who requests to speak to the council regarding
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Persons. My name is Deborah Wilson. I live at 3212 South Cochise Avenue, Independence, Missouri. I'm sorry, a little nervous. So I want to speak against the North Point development. I want to speak for my children and grandchildren that cannot be here tonight. Tonight, I want to speak for children and future children that will grow up to bear the burden of our decisions. Our children and grandchildren will be left, when we are gone, with a concrete slab warehouse district where once their elders enjoyed the beauty of its surroundings, a place where eagles once flew, hunted, and bore their young, now concrete. Concrete ground which will be unable to absorb the pouring spring rains that will cause the river to flood even more than it has in the past. Concrete surrounded by so-called green space that will no doubt have pesticides that will leak into the river and lands with the rain, destroying an already endangered ecosystem. I ask you to think long and hard before, before, long and hard before making this irreversible, before laying this irreversible burden on the future. Please don't let this be our legacy.
Our next speaker is Gerald Wilson, who requests to speak to the council regarding
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a hard speech to follow, and I have to say that, that's my wife, so I'll do my best. But when I, this first came about, I talked to a couple of council members, and they said, please keep an open mind. So I did. I went to the North Point meeting. I went to the planning meeting, and I have definitely made my mind up now. As I listen to the arguments, which were really nothing more than hype in order to get the thing to pass, and just take a look at them, needs to be done for the kids, for jobs in the future. Really, we're going to set the bar that hard, high for our schooling that we want to turn them out so they can get some warehouse jobs? We could do that with GEDs and save everybody some money. And all of us, I'm sure, have sat around the house and put our little ones on our lap and say, if you study hard and do what you need in school, someday you may grow up to work down in a warehouse. That doesn't happen. It's not for the kids. It's not an argument. The next is the school districts that will make gains on money, and I don't doubt that there may be some money there, although it's not equal. Some school districts will get a lot more than others. And we are not going to solve our school funding problems by gimmicks. That's what the lottery and legal gambling was. Remember, all the money schools is going to get, going to solve all our problems and make life better, you know? What was it really? Creating 5,000 jobs. That one really interests me because I just read some articles a while back about how disappointed Kansas City, Kansas, and the state of Kansas was in the amount of jobs that they had created after they gave that GM plant when they built it, all those tax breaks. You know, it's a funny thing because Oklahoma built a plant at the same time. It went 25 years through its, through its relief on taxes and everything, and then closed the plant. I also know this, you know, when a new district comes in and people move in, there are companies from further away, Lenex or somewhere, they bring their workforce with them. You know, it's not like that, oh, nobody unless you work at Independence is going to work there. And I sincerely doubt whether there'll be 5,000 jobs, but it makes good publicity and would look great on a resume if it actually happened, I guess. Traffic, we're not even supposed to worry about that. It won't be that bad, except for a few double-turn lanes, widening roads, constant road repair, all at the taxpayers' expense, all lengthening the on-and-off ramps on I-70. This thing about traffic won't, you know, trucks in the neighborhood that take shortcuts to avoid the traffic and cut through neighborhoods, all that, you know? Day-and-night traffic, you know, pollution, all of that. The thing about traffic won't be a problem, simple myth. It's not an argument, it's a myth. But my favorite is always, has been, this is a hometown company. Let me tell you, number one, hometown companies pay taxes. Number two, and it's nothing against companies, this is what they do, they have interests all over the country and very little loyalty to any part of it. They're loyal to their stakeholders, and they're loyal to making profits, and, you know, that's their nature, that's what they're supposed to do. I have no problem with that. But let's not try to sell them as a hometown company. They're no more a hometown company than credit cards companies are because they register in Delaware. They operate out of New York, they register in Delaware for the taxes.
You have one minute.
They're not a hometown company. The, the argument about this was always the plan. I truly love that one, too. I mean, I'm thankful that there wasn't a buggy whip factory in the plan because we'd really be stuck then. The thing about plans is, is they have to change with the environment. Cities is out of step, and you look at them all over this country. They build retail, and retail is dwindling. They build industries, industry changes, you know? They're a step behind what's going on. You've got to congratulate Kansas City, at least with all the incentives and stuff, they ended up getting Facebook, which will provide some higher-paying jobs and something that kids can, can try to achieve. It's a whole different thing. But with green jobs and the other type of thing out of here, is a warehouse really where we're supposed to be? And I'm not saying that we can't build a few warehouses in Independence. I'm saying we don't have to have 10 miles of warehouses up and down one road. You don't need a Fairfax here, you know?
Sir, your time is up. I don't want to cut you off.
Okay, that's all right.
If you want to finish up.
Yes, I just want to do, because I want to put it, I want you to rename the plan a Pie in the Sky, and that's because North Point gives you the recipe, the taxpayer bakes the pie, the taxpayer pays for the ingredients, the taxpayer keeps it flying, and 30 years later, the taxpayer gets a sliver of a decrepit, out-of-date pie.
Our next speaker is Dana Long, who requests to speak to the council regarding North Point development. Ms. Long.
Yes, I address the mayor and all the city council members. Never been to a city council meeting, so I'm, I have no notes, so I'm just winging it. But I want to address the townhomes that are being built in the North Point area. I live in Salem East and 19010 East 19th Street Court North, that they've changed it, and I've lived there for 32 years. I have neighbors all around me that have been there for, my next-door neighbor, 47 years, 33 years, I mean, I could just go on and on. They have raised their children there. Now they're raising their grandchildren there. And what I see is, and what I'm so concerned about, is that these townhouses, rental townhomes that are being built, I worry about them later on not being credible townhouses, and then they go into Section 8. And the reason why I worry about that so much is because I found out who the developer was, and that is where my red flag came, and that is Steve McBee and the developers. I'm worried about that because I'm worried about his past endeavors. I'm worried about his reputation. And so with that being said, that's in my backyard now, that's in my sandbox, and I don't want to play in my sandbox. I do not want to do it. I understand that you can develop somewhere else. I don't understand, you've got Kmart right there, huge development thing that could be developed. Why in our backyard? And then again, it will be, as I know, will be a Section 8 in several years from now because that is his pattern. And so I'm very opposed to it, and I don't like it, and that is why I'm here to address that also, I'm here to address the traffic in that my grandson goes to school at Fort Osage. He rides the bus. Now there are three, three seats, you know, three children to a, to a seat, and there is times when they are asked to sit in the floor of the bus because there's not enough room. So with this being addressed as well, is Fort Osage going to be ready for this? Is that district going to be ready for this being done? This is, all of these things that I'm saying are a fact. He rides the bus, there's free to a seat, of course, there's no seat belts, and then at times they're asked to sit in the aisles, I mean, on the floor of the bus. Another thing that is, that people don't realize, and the gentleman expressed the traffic, Blue Hills Road, Blue Mills Road, is the highest, deadliest street in the United States. Look it up. It was on Good Morning America, which was shocked to me, having coffee, and here I, they tell me this, and I think, Blue Mills Road, it is the highest for death rate, traffic death rates in the world, in the United States. 24 Highway and Blue Mills Road. That's also scary. Now we're going to have more traffic. And then I understand that the outlet, the in and out of the townhomes is going to be on the Salem Drive section. Whether that's true, I don't know that as well, but I had heard that. That also concerns me. So with all of this being said, and again, with the red flag that I find out the developer is Mr. McBee, that is a big flag, and so I don't, that's why I'm here, because I know he's consistent in what he does.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anita Champion Burks, who wishes to speak to the council regarding the North Point project.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, guests, and citizens of Independence, I want to speak tonight about the North Point project, which I am very much against. I retired just this past year, but since I've moved to Independence, I've traveled different roads around the area. When they put in the Little Blue Parkway to my husband and I, who both work in construction, it was a godsend. It gave us a means of getting around traffic along 291, I-70. It gave us a back way. We fell in love with this road. It didn't matter, matter the weather, and we'd driven it at all of it because construction workers always go to work, you have to show up. Coming from Michigan, winters weren't bad for me. My husband had a little bit more difficulty. But the rainstorms here was something I had to contend with. I have never seen torrential rains like they fall here in Independence. I've driven Little Blue Parkway through some of those torrential rains and high winds, and there's been two to three inches of water on Little Blue Parkway in the middle of those storms. You persevere. In the spring or after those torrential rains, the fields adjacent to Little Blue Parkway from 24 Highway all the way to RD Mines are filled up with water. If you don't know it's water, just watch the ducks. The ducks are swimming in the fields. In the spring and the fall, we've gotten accustomed to seeing the geese and the snow geese who stop there during their migration north and south. They utilize that property, and they know it's there. Every one of the new ones that have come back and forth know it's there. North Point wants to cover it up with asphalt and steel warehousing. As I began, I told you that I am a construction worker. I did 42 years in the construction industry. I know what it takes to build a building. I know the pollutants that come off from it. I fell in love with this area. I fell in love with Little Blue Parkway, the Little Blue Valley, as it is. I do not want to see it ruined for the people that live adjacent, nor for the people that pass by. I've heard that this warehousing is supposed to be an introduction of Independence to the rest of the people that come from out of town, that they can see how much progress Independence is doing. Warehousing is not progress. Warehousing only lasts anywhere from 10 to 15 years, then you've got a bunch of abandoned buildings. The asphalt, after it's laid, leaches off petroleum products that'll leach down into the Little Blue River, which is attached to the Missouri River. You're not just affecting Independence, it's affecting everyone along every tributary of the Missouri River. It gets into the groundwater. Our aquifers are adjacent to the Missouri River. Eventually, it gets to all of us and everybody downriver. The TIF that North Point is asking for is going to saddle the City of Independence taxpayers with a burden that we can ill afford. We've already gotten saddled with a crackerneck one. Bass Pro didn't pan out the way we thought it would, and the last figure I saw was $88 million. You tack on more TIF grants, reduction in property taxes drawn from these buildings from this project.
You have one minute.
And you're going to get a minor yield as revenue for the city. But that revenue is not going to come back to the city, it's going to go back into repairs. It's going to go back into a debt where it will cost this city to put in utilities for every one of those warehouses, to tear up that ground. It's going to cost this city taxpayers and property owners who are going to bail and say, you want it, you can keep it. And if you think that they're going to have people moving back into those homes, especially with the high prices now, the prices will plummet. Realty prices will plummet, anything adjacent to this project. Some have said that Little Blue Parkway is built for traffic. I watched it grow up. I watched the roadbed go in. I watched what they put on top of it. I watched them lay the asphalt. That is nowhere near a heavy truck traffic roadbed. Look at it the way it is now, just with car traffic, and it's light car traffic. There are cracks in that asphalt. The seams at the line are opening up, and it gets worse and worse every year. In the springtime, the bridges need to have...
Ma'am, your time is up. I don't, again, I don't want to cut you off, but if you could, we do have several other speakers.
I will quickly wrap up. At each one of the bridges that passes over a tributary that goes to the Little Blue, there is a dip that when you hit it, you can actually bottom out a small car. Fortunately, I drive trucks and vans. All that needs to be repaired before we can put heavy traffic on it. It's my opinion that the members of this council and the planning commission, who has already given their blessing for this project, drive this entire stretch of pavement, northbound and southbound. Drive it in your own vehicle, drive it in a city vehicle, I don't care, go for a ride with one of the utility workers. Feel the road beneath the tires, then drive it again, but this time, look at the beauty of the valley. Observe the wildlife which live and use this valley, the migrating birds, the ducks, the deer, the coyote, the bobcat. Then look to the sky where an eagle will fly over looking for prey and carry on. Go to the top of the hill on Holkey Road, look down on the valley, and imagine all of it gone, covered in asphalt with steel buildings.
Ma'am.
No more beauty.
I need to ask you to wrap up. We have several other speakers this evening.
In 10 to 15 years, they will sit idle like other properties in Independence. If North Point wishes to build in our area, there are several large properties that have already been vacant and waiting for new life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next, we do have a couple of non-residents who had requested to speak to the council this evening, so we will need a motion to suspend the rules for order.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Ware.
Yes. Our next speaker is Jennifer Burke, who wishes to speak to the council opposing McBee Acres.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to keep it under five minutes, I'll try.
Thanks.
First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to stand here before you and express our concerns and questions. I'm a life, almost a lifelong resident of Salem East, very opposed to this for numerous reasons. I was in attendance... I was in attendance to the meeting that McBee Properties had for the residents. As one other mentioned, there's only seven of us there. We took the time and listened to the proposal, which included townhouses, cleaning up Independence and making it a better place. The most important question at the meeting from the residents were, will these be turned into low housing income? Low, I'm sorry, low-income housing. Unfortunately, McBee Property could not guarantee that these would not be turned into low housing. They would only confirm that they would be rentals, rentals. And this is why we are concerned our value are going, value of our home will be going down. I gave you guys a PowerPoint of examples of his current properties that he does run out. He, as far as I can tell, I'm sorry, McBee Properties, has sixteen houses in our area. Most of them have overgrown bushes, unkept trees, broken windows, makeshift fences, no blinds in the windows, inside furniture that is outside, cars parked in the yard, molding growing on siding, and that's just the exterior. The lack of maintenance, whether it be McBee Properties or the tenants' responsibility, it ultimately falls on the McBee Properties. Skip that stuff, sorry. The McBee Properties stated in the prior meeting we had here that he is, maintains his properties well. Unfortunately, I have yet to come across one that fits the bill for well-kept. I have a prided you with examples of the houses. If you guys need addresses, I can't provide those. And these are just a few of them in Independence. He also mentions that he owns properties in Blue Springs, Sugar Creek, Buckner, Grain Valley, Oak Grove, Odessa, as well as Gallatin, Missouri. Those of us who reside in the neighborhood have to look at these properties day after day. We can only assume that these new buildings will also reflect the current properties in the years to come. We live here and look at these properties day after day as residents, and we have to see them unkept. And I'm also wondering if the property management also has to drive through these. After seeing what kind of disrepair the properties are in, I decided to go to Google reviews and see what others thought, all of which had nothing positive to say regarding him or his property management company. Putting his business technique aside, my other concerns are traffic. Leaving Salem East on Salem Drive at Little General Light, it fits two cars, one turning left or straight and the other going right. It's such a tight fit that half the time you cannot even turn right because of everyone trying to go straight or left. Next to Salem East is a little subdivision they added on called Church Hill, which they also access Salem Drive up to Little General. I had some questions. I, I don't know if they're here tonight for the McBee property owners, or property. Since these are family dwellings, has the Fortis Sage School District been notified, as one other resident was concerned about?
You have one minute.
What I would like to see go here is something that makes us citizens and residents of Independence come together. They mentioned an excess of water, so a beautiful rain garden or two would be nice, a nice walking trail, a small or large dog park, a neighborhood garden, a place to sell produce or small farmer's market in the surrounding areas can visit. As I close tonight, I hope Mr., or the McBee Properties take notice of the state of his current rentals and start there with making Independence beautiful again. I also ask Eddie Reese not to sell the property, as it would be a betrayal of our community and those who live here. And to you, our councilmen and women, and Madam Mayor, I would also like to thank you and would also like to care, for you to carefully consider the ramifications of allowing town homes, homes to be built in our community and the negative impact financially it would be on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Sorenson, who wishes to speak to the council on behalf of the retirees of the city of Independence. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. It's gonna be hard to follow those speakers, I can tell you. They all did a very good job in presenting their case. I just wanted to speak briefly because this is the day before election, as I'm sure you're all aware. And I would just wanted to stand here representing the retirees. I wanted to thank you, Mayor Weir. I wanted to thank Mike Huff, and I wanted to thank Karen DeLucy for their past four years of service. Nobody knows what the results of the election will be tomorrow, and I guess we will all wait and see. But I wanted to thank you all, not knowing if you'll be here again, or if you won't, for your time that you give and listen to me over the past three years. There's been a lot of issues that's come up that affected retirees, and I was able to speak. You all allowed me to speak on, on their behalf, and you listened. And we were very successful in addressing most of those problems. I also wanted to thank the city manager and assistant city manager, because I've used up a lot of their time, and they've always listened to me. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you. I want to thank the other councilmembers that are sitting here, because you all listened to me. And it was an important issue when I came to speak. I don't enjoy doing this, whether you think that or not, but I don't enjoy this. But I wanted to express that, and for your support. I, it's been an honor to know all of you over these last three years, and I wish all of you luck in the election tomorrow, those that are here, those that are not here that are running. And I just want to take that opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Our, our final speaker is Michael Elkins. Is that correct? Okay. He would like to speak about Fairmount Plaza Apartments Parking. If you'd please come forward, Mr. Elkins.
Good evening, councilmen, woman, mayor. I live across the street from 615 South Huttig, live at 618 South Huttig. The problem we're having is the building that's been allowed to be built in a residential neighborhood that initially was supposed to be two stories high, ended up being built three stories high because they couldn't put a ground level for flooding or some reason or another. So they built it three stories high when it wasn't supposed to be, which is one problem. And they also didn't build a parking lot adequate for the city ordinance that they're supposed to have one space per unit, and they're missing about twenty-six spaces. And the issue is, though, it could actually be solved because the parking lot they have now, there's like twenty-seven spaces in it. Since it's an older folks, you know, low-income home, most of the people there don't drive, about half of them drive, but they're not parking in their lot. So they park all on the side of the street. You got eleven cars down Huttig, making it to where it should either be a one-way, or they could take the curb back, make them park over there closer or something, but something's gotta be done about it. I've talked to city councilmen, different people, a couple of years ago. Nobody called me back. When I called back to complain about it, somebody did call me. It was actually the person that determines what's safe and what's not in the city, and they told me that they weren't gonna do anything about it. And then I said, well, do I need to go to a city council meeting? He said, well, if that's what you want to do, like I said a couple of years ago, and it's progressively getting worse. And, you know, the other neighbor Florence over there at 614, she can vouch for it. I mean, it's, you can't even hardly back out of driveways because of how close the cars are. I've actually almost hit one, luckily, anyways, I didn't hit it. Yeah. But I would just like them to be made to use their parking lot. You know, they've got the spaces there, use them. I've got some pictures to where literally there's fourteen or fifteen empty spaces throughout the day and in the evening, and they're empty. And they're, like I said, they've got spaces. I've been over there and, you know, spoken with the leasing manager, only to be rudely turned away a few months back. So I'd appreciate it if something was done about it. And the things that I think could be done is, they're either gonna have to take the, they got like a garden area in the back, and that's when I was over there in the city hall complaining about it a couple of years ago. He opened up the blueprints, and he said, well, maybe they can put it here, you know? And I said, well, I don't really care, but something's gotta be done because the city can't, they can't hold people responsible for things like yard infractions and stuff unless something major like, a building, for one, that should never have been put in a residential neighborhood, shouldn't go sit there with parking like that. I feel like I live in their front yard now. Yeah, so two-hour parking would be nice out front because they have nurses that show up, and they leave quickly. So that's what I suggest. I really would appreciate it if something was done, because I don't want to take further action. Do you know what I mean?
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our speakers for this evening. Okay, so next we move to our presentation resolution recognizing our employee of the month, Madam Saie Clerk.
Bill number twenty-two dash seven two eight, a resolution recognizing Richie Lucetti, contract and bids administrator with the Finance and Administration Department, as the employee of the month for April 2022.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Where are we at?
I was-
We're on the employee of the month. Did you want to say something?
Congratulations.
Okay. That's what I thought. Rich, now that we've gotten through all that drama, why don't you come forward and accept your resolution as Becky reads it?
Whereas the city employee recognition-
Did we vote? Okay, now we'll vote, see. No, after you read it.
Whereas the city employee rec, employee recognition program recognizes outstanding performance by employees of the city of Independence. And whereas an employee committee selects the employee of the month for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service. Whereas the employee recognition committee has selected Richie Lucetti, contract and bids administrator with the Finance and Administration Department, as the employee of the month for April 2022.
Okay, now we will call the roll on the resolution.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes.
Now, Rich, if you'd like to come forward. Thank you. Next, we have our Seven Days proclamation. Madam Saie Clerk.
Whereas seven days make a ripple change the world as an annual event to overcome hatred, bigotry, and ignorance. Whereas seven days continues with themed days of love, discover, others, connect, you, go, and onward, as we bring people from different faiths and cultures together to overcome evil with acts of kindness. Whereas the memories of three wonderful and unique people, Dr. William Copren, Ree Underwood, and Terry Lamano, who lost their lives in April 2014 due to acts of hatred, will live on and be cherished. Now therefore, Eileen and Weir, Mayor of the city of Independence, hereby proclaims April thirteenth through twenty-fourth in recognition of seven days in Independence, Missouri, and urges all citizens to remember the events of April thirteenth, 2014, not only for the losses of that day, but also for the significance of, of the powerful and enduring vow to overcome evil with good.
Thank you. They are not here this evening to accept this proclamation, but we will be having a number of events next week in honor of the seven days that we will make known to everybody through our social media platforms. So I encourage each and every one of you in our community to take advantage of that. And this is a, a great event that we have participated in for several years to try to promote understanding in our communities, so we're proud to do it again this year. Okay, our next proclamation is for Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Whereas children are vital to the future success and prosperity of Independence, however, they are also the most vulnerable members of our society. Whereas children abuse can have long-term emotional, psychological, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas creating family protective factors can promote the optimal development of children and reduce the likelihood of child abuse and neglect. Whereas we acknowledge we must unite to increase awareness about child abuse and support the social and emotional well-being of children and families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening our community. Now therefore, Eileen and Weir, Mayor of the city of Independence, hereby proclaims April 2022 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Independence, Missouri, and urges all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Okay, thank you. Christina, you want to come up? Okay, this takes us to our consent agenda. Mayor Protan.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items any councilmember wishes pulled for separate consideration?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Number four, please.
All right, any others? Hearing none, please call the roll on the consent agenda minus item number four.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Items pass. Councilman Hobart, item number four.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I had a question for Mr. Walker, and my COVID brain is getting the best of me right now. It seems like, didn't we do this before, and it was less than a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, we brought this item to the council at the end of last year. I believe it was the last meeting before the end of the calendar year. We had utilized one of our regional cooperative purchasing agreements to recommend awarding this project, and that was at about seventy-nine thousand dollars. Council asked us to go out and actually get bids for this instead of the cooperative purchasing agreement, and the lowest and most responsive bid for that is about seventy-five thousand dollars more, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
We can undo that?
I would have to check as far, I, we could go back out and check our cooperative purchasing agreement. I will, I won't, I won't bet because that's illegal, but I will guess that that's probably going to be more than the seventy-nine thousand dollars at this point because of what has happened with the price of materials and inflation since December. The seventy-nine thousand dollar number has probably sailed at this point, is my summary.
Gotcha, okay. Well, I'm gonna vote to approve it. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, would you like to make a motion for approval?
I would move to approve item number four on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes.
Item number four passes. Our first public hearing this evening is for the application by Jessica Glavas of Quick Trip requesting a rezoning from C-one Neighborhood Commercial and C-two General Commercial to C-two General Commercial for the property located at 16813 East 23rd Street. This is new information only. Mr. Arroyo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning application was considered by Planning Commission on March eighth. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this motion. This is the southwest corner of 291 and 23rd Street, where the existing Red Racks is at, and this is basically for a Quick Trip and an urgent care facility. I have no new information to add.
Okay, is there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I had a question about the traffic. Is this where I would ask that?
Okay.
There's a lot of traffic there on Hub Drive when you're trying to turn onto 23rd Street. Is there any plan to deal with that at all?
So this actually took about six months to kind of work through the traffic with MoDOT and the city, as well as the applicant. And what you'll see with this particular plan is that they're all basically right in, right out, and the purpose of that was to try to make sure that we mitigate any of the actual traffic issues that are there at the intersection.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Madam Saie Clerk.
Bill number twenty-two dash zero one nine, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-one Neighborhood Commercial and C-two General Commercial to District C-two General Commercial for 16813 East 23rd Street South, AKA 16801 East 23rd Street South, and 2304 South and 291 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill?
Yes.
Yes, I wondered, do we have any knowledge of what they're gonna do with the one at Gudgee? Are we gonna have another vacant building sitting out there for two or three years? Or have you heard anything about that?
So the applicant has expressed to us that they intend to keep that one open for that particular side of 291 traffic.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes.
Item passes. Our next public hearing is for the application by Shane and Amy Harris requesting a rezoning from C-two General Commercial to R-six Single Family Residential for the property located at 16000 East 23rd Street. This is new information only. Mr. Arroyo- Mr. Arroyo.
Thank you again. This rezoning was also considered on the March 8th Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of it. This is a single-family residence that is wanting to, it's currently legal non-conforming, and they're wanting to rezone this to be able to do either repairs and/or refinancing. I have no new information to add.
Are there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Madam Saicler.
Bill number 22-021, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential for 16000 East 23rd Street South in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. We have three non-ordinance action items tonight. Madam Saicler.
Bill number 22-730, a resolution encouraging the city manager to include funding in the fiscal year 2022, 2023 submitted budget for the addition of body cameras for the Independence Police Department in anticipation of receiving federal grant funds to implement a body-worn camera program.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, I've said a lot about body cams since I've been on this council. Obviously, I think they're a very important tool for our police officers, so this is just basically encouraging the city manager to find, figure out a way to fund them through grants or whatever other methods he can come up with, and I would ask the council to support this with me. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Hobart.
Mr. Walker, it's budget season, and it's my understanding from the Audit and Finance Committee that department heads are in the process of putting budgets together. Unfortunately, Acting Chief Dustman gets to put his first budget together in an interesting time for our police department. Have you spoken with him about body cams? What's the?
Yeah, over the course of the prior two weeks, each of the city departments has come in and updated me on key issues in their departments and in their budget package requests. And as Councilmember Stewart said, this has certainly been something the council has talked about for the past several months. Anticipating the resolution tonight, I did ask him to prepare just a, you know, not a study session length, but just some quick remarks to highlight for you what he shared with me in the departmental budget presentations, some interesting insights there. So if he could come forward, I'll have him make his truncated remarks for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Adam Dustman, interim chief of police for the Independence Police Department. And while I appreciate your comments, Councilman Hobart, I actually look forward, I'm one of those nerds that likes the budget season, believe it or not, so I kind of geek out over that. In that vein, I've prepared for you a little bit, and while Councilmember Stewart, I could not agree more, and the members of the police department could not agree more with the importance of body cameras, we are in favor of those as a department as well as individual members, the accountability of the transparency that that provides, as well as just being able to reinforce the outstanding work that our officers do each and every day for the citizens of this city. I get the luxury and the good fortune, get to see that time and time again, whereas everybody else doesn't necessarily get to see that and hear that all the time. So, to provide you a little bit of context, and like the city manager said, I'd be more than happy to come before you and have a longer discussion at a future study session, but I wanted to give you some highlights through the finance director Brian Kidney and our work with Grant Scribe. We did identify a grant through the Department of Justice. It's due May the 25th, and the award would be obviously coinciding with the federal fiscal year October 1. There are some limitations to this grant. It's a 50% matching grant, but it goes off of the actual device purchases that we have. In our budget package that was council-directed as well as endorsed and supported by the police department that we put forth to the city manager's office, we started with a partial implementation of about 100 cameras, and the cost of that all told was about $789,732 for 100 cameras as the initial implementation. The matching 50% grant is only for $2,000 per device, so the only amount that we would be eligible for from the DOJ grant would be $200,000 at that 100-camera implementation, and that includes the equipment, the personnel cost, all told, and that would require the city to kick in $200,000 as well at that 100-camera implementation, leaving us on the hook for the additional $589,732. A full implementation, as was requested and suggested, would be for 200 cameras. Again, the max amount that we are able to get through this department adjustments grant would be $400,000. Our budget estimate for that entire full implementation is about $1.7 million. So that would leave the city remaining portion for $1.3 million. Obviously, just some high-line things for you all, the grant is just a seed grant, it's not a perpetually enduring grant that we could reapply for, this is just to get the program off and running, and then the rest of the financial and fiscal impact would be then fall back on the city and to come up with those funds. The current budget for the police department cannot absorb $1.3 million, as you may well be aware. For our current operating expense budget for all operations of the police department for a fiscal year is about $3.5 million, so just the partial implementation would be 17% of our current operating budget. The full implementation, the $1.3 million, would be 37% of our current operating expense budget. So then, as I made a presentation to the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee here recently at our last meeting, the narrative naturally goes to, well, we just did Prop P, and why couldn't we use those funds to be able to implement this program? And so I wanted to give you again some comparison numbers for you. The effect of the $589,000 would be the equivalent of eliminating eight of the 30 new officer positions out of the use tax that the voters voted to support. The full implementation at the $1.3 million would be the equivalent of eliminating 17 and a half of the new 30 officer positions out of the use tax. So while we fully support this, absolutely look forward to, and will continue to look forward to, meeting with companies and vendors and trying to discuss the best fiscally responsible way forward, I just want this council to be aware of the financial impact of this program, and I'll be happy to take any questions. I hope that was brief enough. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Dustman, if I can follow up, have you spoken with the Independence Police Foundation about this?
I have. They're currently funding the LPR and the cameras along all of our roads, so as they're getting up and running, they just don't have the finances to, they could probably support this in some form or fashion initially, but again, sustainability, and again, as Councilmember Stewart probably knows, a body camera is no different than any other computer device. It has a lifespan, just like anything else. It's going to have to be replaced over a certain period of time. So going forward, we're going to have to find other ways to be able to find this within funds to be able to support this program, because as you all know, and the citizens rightfully will require, that once we roll this out, it's not like we can just say, no, sorry, we don't have the funds for this, and then roll it back.
One more question. Do, the numbers that you gave us, does that include the data and storage?
The initial data and storage, yes. The ongoing storage, no, because that is an unknown for us as far as, there are two different options. Most of them are all cloud-based, and you have an archiving option where we actually own the data themselves, the videos that are stored during our normal statutorily required retention periods, and then we pay, or we own those records, but we have to pay for the storage of those records. Another option is the cloud-based system where we pay a fee that every time we recall it, a record. So as a citizen or open records request, there's a X number of dollar fee to be able to recall that record. So it really varies, just like the vendors that we found varies. There's a lot of intellectual patents that are out there, much like the Yeti Cooler you might have seen, you know, and once that patent runs out, a lot of people can reproduce those. The same will happen with body cameras over time, but right now, you're piecemealing, you know, proprietarily what they each have.
You mentioned having a study session. Would you be opposed to providing more information about vendors and types and maybe do some extra research? Would you be opposed to that, Mr. Walker?
We'd be, if the council wishes, we'd be happy. I think it's a meritorious topic. I know we lag many of our peers in the metropolitan area with this. Just what I found interesting in my one, my budget presentation with the chief is all the extraneous and costs that go along with this, and I think we just need to understand the full cost of owning before we make that plunge. So that's why I asked him to come up tonight, but we'd be happy if the council's interested to add this to one of our upcoming agendas.
I, one further statement, I, contrary to some people's maybe leftover beliefs, I actually am quite interested in having body cameras, just as you've expressed on behalf of your officers. I would be very interested, and I'll, at the end of questions, I'll make a motion to put this on a study session and postpone this, but, Mr. City Manager, I know the budget's tight and all that, but, you know, I don't know if we have enough coins in the couch cushion, but it sure would be good for everybody if we could figure out a way to get creative and make some of this happen. So, anyway, that's all I have for now, and pass it over.
Yeah, have we done anything to ask for private donations? I talked to a gentleman here a few months ago about this, and he was very interested in actually buying these cameras for the police department. We did any outreach for private donors, and also, when we talk about, I realize it's got to be an updated thing with the computers and everything. What'd you say the expense was for that, to keep it going, if someone was to do this?
The private side? The initial implementation is $789,732. That's 100 cameras. The 200-camera full implementation is about $1.7 million. That includes the actual hardware itself, which actually is not as expensive as some might think. The initial data storage projection with us and Tech Services, what we felt like would probably be realistic. The infrastructure for the cars, there's going to have to be a parallel system that goes into, it can't run off of the same bandwidth as the in-car dash cam and microphones that we have. And then the personnel cost, as the city manager mentioned, is roughly just under $400,000 annually, is three positions.
$400,000 annually?
Yep.
Okay, that's the number I was looking for. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stewart, do you have something else?
Uh, no. Actually, could we do this on the study session next Monday? Is that possible?
Yeah, we can, and we don't need a motion. I think just unless there's objection, we can put it on the study session for Monday. I, private donations, always welcome. That's what the police foundation is there for. I think that that would be a wonderful conversation to have with the foundation to see if that would be something that, if people wanted to specifically contribute to a fund for that, that would be phenomenal. I mean, we just can't say we can't afford it, so we're not going to do it. I mean, that's just not an option. I mean, it just isn't. So, I don't believe we really need to postpone this. I, all it is doing is encouraging the city manager to pursue this. When I've spoken with the city manager about this, I, you know, provided him with two of my priorities for this fiscal year's budget, body cams and fund balance. So, what I encouraged the city manager to start working with the police department and finance department with is, we got to put a plan in place. We may not be able to do everything we want to do in one year, but we've got to give our police department and our community a assurance that this is the path that we are going to be on, and Chief Dustman's absolutely correct. It's not a program that you can do for a couple of years and then say, we can't afford to do it anymore, and take it away. So, I would be happy to support this tonight, put this on a study session for next week to continue the conversation and put together a strategy.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So I guess this is a question for you, Mr. City Manager. So if this was to pass, and I too am for body cameras and given the tools as need be, I've talked to Jason and several others, so very much for it. So, if we are to move forward with this and pursue the grants, we can't capture any grants because we don't have any matching funds to that. So, in spirit, we're supporting this, in reality, we cannot. Is, would that be my assumption, and is that correct?
We're at a point, I mean, the last few months, I've tried to present this to the council so nothing comes as a surprise. You used, we used $3.5 million of federal funds last year to plug our budget in the general fund. That was one-time money that we don't have this year. You know, we haven't polished every last number, so I don't want to publicly, but, you know, the deficit's going to be at least that much, if not more. So we have to figure out what we're not going to do just to get back to zero, and then every dollar above and beyond that is also what we're not going to do to pursue this. So, yes, we're going to have to figure out what the trade-off is in order to add anything new in the budget, whether it be body cameras or additional code enforcement or any of the other really important priorities you all have.
Councilman Stewart, if I may ask, if I, I just want to make sure I'm reading your item correctly. This isn't committing us to any-
No.
-any finances, any program. It's simply to encourage us to continue to have this conversation, and the council will vote on the budget when it's presented.
Yes, that's my, that was my intent, was just start the conversation, let's hope we can do it, and hopefully everybody supports it. That was my intent.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes.
Item passes. Item number two.
Bill number 22-731, a resolution requesting the Missouri State Auditor to conduct a comprehensive performance audit to examine and evaluate the management of the City of Independence' fiscal, budgetary, and procurement policies and procedures to ensure transparency and accountability to the taxpayers and the expenditure of public funds.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, in the last two years since I've been on the council, I've been contacted by a lot of different people, spoken with a lot of people throughout the city, and I constantly hear the same thing, that they're, that they just don't believe that the city is being transparent and using our funds to the best of the ability that we can. And while I try, you know, to say, you know, tell them we are, you know, I just keep hearing it. So I know Jackson County did one of these audits a couple of years ago, and they're not cheap, I'm not going to say they are. In fact, I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollars that Jackson County paid for theirs, so it's not going to be cheap, but I think we should do this. And I've been, I've been thinking about doing this for, since I've been on the council, putting this on there. And I did have two, or I had an amendment I wanted to make on this as well. So I believe each of you had your thing in front of you. So I want to add a section two and three. So section two would state that upon passage of this resolution, the cost associated with the audit shall be paid for out of the general fund. And section number three, that upon passage of this resolution, the city manager is directed to contact the Missouri State Auditor's office to determine if they will agree to an audit and finalize the details. And I must say, they do have to agree to it. Just because we pass it doesn't mean it will happen, because they do have to agree. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion to amend first.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend section two and section three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Amendment passes. Motion to amend passes. Mr. City Manager or Mr. Kovar, I don't know where to direct this question. I don't, I'm not familiar with the process. We are proactively requesting an audit. The process I'm familiar with is petitioning the auditor through a collection, initiative petition through a collection of signatures. So, can somebody explain how that typically, I mean, normally, the audit, we have certainly undergone various audits, various outside groups over, you know, decades have- undergone various audits, various outside groups over, you know, decades have requested audits and funded them. So, you know, various unions and other people have done audits and funded them. But I'm just not, this is a new way of going about it for me. So, how does that work?
Yeah, so the process you're referring to is initiative petition, and that process is outlined in the statute. And there's forms on, as far as I know, on the auditor's website that essentially tells you how to go about that process. And that's when citizens have an initiative petition, and it gets approved by the auditor's office, and then they have to get a certain number of signatures, and it goes back and forth. And then, if that is successful, the auditor's office will come in and do an audit as they see fit. It is still the entity that gets charged for it always. In this case, obviously, this is not an initiative petition. I don't know what their response is going to be. I haven't had this situation before, so I'm not aware of another process other than initiative petition to initiate an audit. But that doesn't prevent you all from asking for it, if that's what you want to do.
Madam Mayor?
Okay.
I basically use the same resolution that Jackson County used two years ago. Theirs was approved. I did speak with somebody in the auditor's office earlier today, and she essentially told me that if it is approved tonight, basically, take a copy of the resolution, contact them. She gave me an email address that could be sent to, which obviously I'd pass along to the city manager if it was approved.
So, is this a, when Jackson County's audit was for specific funds, correct?
From what I understand, like I said, this is the resolution they used. The questions were asked and the bullet points of the resolution. And then, the auditor makes the determination what to audit on those bullet points.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know specifically what was audited with Jackson County, but that audit cost $277,000. I know it was an audit of the Sheriff's Department. It certainly was not an audit of everything. And I understand people don't like what's happened with the finances in the city. I don't either. That's why I ran for office. This, should we agree to it or pass it, could literally result in no code enforcement. It could result in less officers. And I know everybody thinks that I'm part of some conspiracy or have to get people. My parents are sitting right there, and you're free to ask them if they'll put up with it if I hate independents and I'm on the take. I want to be very clear about something. This is going to cost us hundreds of thousands, if not into seven figures, out of the general fund. If we're setting that policy, it's then also our job to set the policy to say what we're cutting. That'll happen if the auditor's office accepts it on their timeline. But things will literally be cut out of other offices. Maybe that's the will of the council, maybe that's the will of the people. But let's be very clear, this is not a simple thing that you just do because you want it. This is serious business, and it's going to be very expensive. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, yeah, I realize it's serious business, and I have a feeling that if we don't pass it, we're going to get a citizen petition that does it anyway, because there's some pretty serious people out there that are ready to collect signatures to force us to do it. So, that's all I have.
And to be clear, I've always been supportive of initiative petition. It's a great tool. And I encourage people, if they're willing to organize and take advantage of that, then they should certainly do that. I, in light of the discussion that we just finished having about, you know, $1.7 million for body cams, minimum of the $3 million deficit that we're facing right now, Mr. Swanson coming in, you know, speaking on behalf of our retirees, I'm reluctant to jump into an unknown expense without a little bit more investigation. I don't know that we need a resolution to commit us. I'm not going to support tonight a resolution to commit us to this. I don't, I think that we could contact the auditor, have a further discussion about what it might entail. And the initiative petition process is certainly available to folks. I think, looking at the entire organization, every enterprise fund from top to bottom, is a very, very expensive proposition. So, maybe we could determine what are the areas that are of greatest concern. We do have our Audit and Finance Committee. I'm hopeful we're about to hire our management analyst to assist us with these things as well. So, I'm not going to support it tonight, but I think it bears more discussion. Is there anything else? Yes.
Yes, so, if we don't throw this out here, we're never going to find out a price. They're just not going to call them up, and they're going to tell you a price until we initiate something out there. I feel like that, once we do that, that they will give us a number of what they're looking at, so we can work off. They can always decline to do it at that point. Getting it started, it's not going to do anything. It's actually an application, I understand it. Might be two years before they come here.
I'm not personally comfortable that that would be the case, if we request it. I think the price is based on how much time and discovery it takes to complete it. So, I don't think they're going to give us a price upfront. And I don't think, once we make the request, we can, we're, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm not confident that we can then say, "Oh, no, we changed our mind. We don't want to do it." So...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Walker, when's the last time the city was audited that you're aware of?
By the state auditor?
Yeah, by an outside audit.
Well, we have, I mean, we have the annual comprehensive financial review, which is the third party that the council approves every year. The performance audits are done by the city's management analyst. I've worked for the city for 10 years, and I, we've not had a state, outside state.
Yes, we have. We've had our CID's audited.
Correct, correct.
This type of audit? Have we ever had this type of audit before, from top to bottom?
No.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I'm all for transparency and putting it all out there as well. Councilman Hobart, myself, and Councilwoman DeLucy are on the Audit and Finance Committee. And we do our darndest to work with city staff, our outside auditors, to navigate all the minutia of running a city of $350 million plus. We do our darndest to do that. I think we do a really good job doing that. The seriousness of this, I totally take you as face value, Councilman. So, I guess my question would be with these individuals who have had those questions, that one, have you spoken to our finance director? Have you given us any information to the Audit and Finance Committee, to where we can do a deeper dive and see what these specific concerns are, and try to flesh them out and to work through those issues for you, with you, for your constituents? I haven't received anything at the Audit and Finance Committee level, working through those issues. The dollar amount that we're here is an unknown dollar amount. I too reached out to the state auditor's office and worked through their website. And it's pretty open-ended with that, that dollar amount that we would be budgeting in for that. And we are probably looking at every bit of a half a million dollars on up to do that. I would encourage you to review some of the outside audits that we have had through the Audit and Finance Committee, and look at some of the remarks that they have, that we're moving forward, we're improving, we're putting controls in place. So, those things are definitely working, working there. But have you had these dialogues with anybody in city staff?
I have not, because most of my constituents don't trust.
Councilman Perkins, if you'd just direct your questions, please.
Correct. I'll be not in favor for this.
Any further discussion on item number two?
Madam Mayor, just one more thing, please. Yeah, I don't, I know everyone wants to focus on the cost. I think, I think the question that some people have is just the issue of trust, the public trust. Do the public, is the public trust there that if we just keep it in-house, are we fulfilling what they're asking of us? And I think the taxpayers understand the cost. I think what we may be missing is the issue of restoring public trust. And if this is what's being asked of us, and they understand the cost, and they are in favor of this, then we have an obligation to listen to them. We sit here at their leisure and their pleasure. And if that's what is being asked of us, then that's what we should consider. So, I get the cost, but I think we are missing the issue of public trust. And rebuilding some of that trust is important. It's important to me. I hope it's important to you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Weir?
No. Item number two fails. Item number three.
Authorizing the mayor of the City of Independence to execute a letter of support as part of the Buy State Sustainable Reinvestment Corridor Raise Grant Application Committeeing to Provide Matching Funds for This Project in the Amount of Not to Exceed $350,000.
Mr. City Manager, would you like to elaborate on this a little bit, please?
Attached an item produced by Congressman Cleaver's office to this agenda item. This item was first brought to the region by the congressman about late fall, October timeframe last year. The congressman, if you'll recall, was an advocate about a decade ago for some sustainable initiatives, the Green Impact Zone, some of those things. With the discussion in Washington right now centered around this federal infrastructure bill, congressman is hoping to partner with his colleague to that state to the west that we don't mention, who, Sharice Davids, and is going to seek to obtain about upwards of $5 million to bring some green infrastructure, sustainable public transit, and public safety measures to a corridor generally running from the Legends area in KCK through the northern end of downtown Kansas City and along 24 Highway, dropping down south on Nolan to the Independence Square. The regions of KCK, Kansas City, Missouri, Independence, and the Kansas City Area Transit Authority are seeking to apply for a federal grant to fund those initiatives I just mentioned. They are asking for a letter of support from the various jurisdictions. The matching portion in total of that is 1.4 million, which at most would, divided by four, would require the $350,000 per jurisdiction. It has been relayed to us that that is an up-to amount, because they are seeking participation from some other jurisdictions that border this area. For example, the county, Jackson County, other municipalities like Sugar Creek, and some of the other taxing jurisdictions that fall in there. So, they're, in summary again, asking for the four cities who have initially been to the table on this to commit up to $350,000 as matching funds for a federal infrastructure grant focused on sustainability and public safety and public transportation.
And where would that $350,000 come from, and over what period of time?
There are still several questions to be answered on that, I know, Mayor. But the source of funding is going to be a product of the nature of the project. So, predominantly, we see these coming from either the general fund or the city's street sales tax fund.
Okay, thanks. Questions on item number three?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Perkins?
Thank you. A lot of moving parts with this. I was at the press conference that Congressman Cleaver had several months ago. It's been several months.
It was February 21st.
Time flies. So, discussing this and kind of giving a rollout of what this discussion is, a lot of moving parts, lots of it, virtually all of it does touch my district. I would ask that, and I'll make a motion after a conversation, to postpone this. Let's have a study session to discuss.
The grant is due when, Mr. City Manager? April 14th?
Yes.
That's pretty quick. That's a lot of money to put on something that we don't quite understand. So, the question would be, has any other municipality put in their portion, as, do you know?
To my, not to my knowledge, this raise grant, which was formerly known as Tiger Grant, which was in between known as something else. I mean, they all, it changes names. All of the municipalities that Mr. Walker has identified are at the same stage of trying to get approval from their governing bodies to move forward with this application. We don't, you know, we're not in a position where we have to attach a check to the application. But there is a deadline to apply for these federal funds. And so, that's why we're being asked to commit to this contribution so that we can access the levers, those federal funds. Yes.
So, if you've known since February 21st, and we're just now finding out...
No, the press conference was on February 21st.
Okay, so when did we find this out? Then now we're in a rush, rush. I agree with Councilman Perkins with this. I just think it's a rush. It's $350,000. We just talked about the general fund. We couldn't afford half a million for an audit, but we're going to go through, throw 350. We don't even know what it's doing.
I, well, we do know what it's doing. It's leveraging the federal raise grant program. And we, I mean, we found out about it when Congressman Cleaver approached us and said, "Hey, here's an opportunity to leverage some federal funding." So, you know, the timing is what it is.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, this is a tough one, but yet, being fiscally responsible, as we've talked about, I've known a little bit about this. I've talked with our CFS team a little bit, who is kind of working to put this together. So, looking at the mapping here, I mean, we're so far dividing it four ways, is that, that might count, which we get a smaller portion of that. I'm looking at the budgets of the unified government, can, City of Kansas City, I mean, I don't know what their general fund revenue is. It's got to be close to 700 million. Can you speak to their general fund revenues, give or take? I mean, it's significantly larger than our $70 million.
Yeah, it's, the citywide budget, which includes all their enterprises, $2 billion in Kansas City. I don't recall the general fund offhand, but in excess of 100 million.
So, if this was not passed, I guess a question to you, Mayor, if this does not pass, are you, are you, would the...
It just means that we can collectively apply for less money. I mean, that, the, it's a formula. So, whatever the match is, determines how much you can apply for. If there, if Independence chooses not to participate in the match, or chooses to participate a lesser amount, then, my understanding, Mr. Walker, is then it just shifts the formula as to how much we would be eligible to apply for. as to how much we would be eligible to apply for. Is that correct?
I'm not certain on the formula, Mayor.
Or somebody else will have to chip in more, which is fine. They've asked us to bring forward this to the council for approval, to make this pledge to contribute. If the council doesn't want to do it, then we need to vote no, but we can't really postpone it because they need an answer.
Fair enough. I won't make a motion to postpone, I will not be in favor for it. I am in concept, the dollar amount, I cannot. But Mr. City Manager, can we stick it on as a study session at some point? Because this is something that is impactful. We may not be a part of it this round, but in the future discussions.
We do have, I'm going to botch this, we have a representative coming who's worked on this issue for the region at next week's study session to provide additional insight and information on it. That was already pre-arranged for that to happen next Monday night.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Weir?
No. Item number three fails. This takes us to our ordinances. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-018, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a contract with Jackson County, Missouri, which calls for Jackson County to provide funding in the amount of $225,000 to the city for Independence Police Department's Law Enforcement School-Based Initiative Step. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Abstain.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number 22-020, an ordinance amending Section 7.10.004 of the Independent City Code to include a prohibition on the use of vehicles with an internal combustion engine construction, constructed or so out of repair as to create loud or unnecessary noise. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, do you know who requested that this be added to the city code? I know it has Mitch's name on it, but was it him?
I am going off of some memory here, council member, but to the best of my memory, there was a citizen who emailed a couple members of the council, and Mayor Weir worked on this item with the city prosecutor.
Okay. I'm all for stopping loud noise, however, I do have some, I guess, maybe I don't understand it, or maybe, I'm not sure on the language, because my concern is, you know, motorcycles are designed to be loud for a reason. And are they going to be in violation if they modify their exhaust to make them louder?
Well, to be clear, this language doesn't, it isn't based on a decibel level, there's no, if it's this loud, then it's in violation, and if it's not that loud, it's not in violation. This essentially applies a peace disturbance threshold to it. So if it is loud enough to disturb someone's peace, and they want to, you know, call the police and file a complaint and sign that complaint based on that, then it would be, you know, up to the prosecutor's office to, you know, decide how they want to proceed on it. But it would be based on, it's not based on a noise level specifically, a number, it's based on whether or not that person's peace was disturbed, which we also have with other, I mean, there is peace disturbance, and there's noise disturbance. So it's based on an individual person, whether or not they think their peace was disturbed, and then ultimately the prosecutor gets to decide if they want to file it, and it goes from there. But it is not based on a specific number that it has to reach in order to get, you know, so loud and be in violation.
If I can, Councilman Steinmeier and I were both contacted by a citizen who had proposed this as a possible solution. I ran that through the staff. This is to address a common complaint that we all hear of people riding vehicles up and down the street at all hours of the night and day in a disturbing manner. So just to give you some context of where this came from.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And I, I understand what his complaint was. I think your initial comment to him was probably the most, he was full of wisdom when you said, I don't know how we're going to enforce it. And that's really where we're at with this. I live at 35th and Phelps', and I can tell you the Hemi's going down Nolan Road at 2:00 AM disturbed my peace. But I can't identify them, all I know is they're not modified exhaust, that's factory exhaust, it's loud. How are we going to enforce this? Chief Dustman, what would you tell your guys? How do we enforce this? There we go.
As you make your way up, and I don't mean to interrupt you. I live on Blue Ridge Boulevard, and you come over on Sunday, and you can talk about all the motorcycles, four-wheelers, that aren't even supposed to be on the street, going up and down the road. As soon as it hits 50 degrees in this town, it just is every single night, every single day. And so I know that the citizen that contacted the two of us, that was what we're trying to address. Chief.
So Councilman, the enforcement piece of this will come back twofold. One will be calls for service, obviously falling on our patrol officers primarily to respond to the call for service and deal with. As Mr. Cover pointed out, the enforcement side of this ultimately is on the judiciary. It's going to be a GOS complaint, a general ordinance summons, just as if you had any other ordinance violation in the city. They'll have to appear before court, give testimony, and then a judge will ultimately decide guilt or innocence.
So the individual that you said that has to sign a complaint, though, correct?
Correct.
They would have to go to court and be the witness against?
If it went to trial, I mean, yeah, if it went to trial, that would require, the officer couldn't testify as to the facts unless they were a witness, but the officer's peace can't be disturbed, so they can't be the victim. So if it were to go to trial, then it would require whoever was the complaint witness to come and testify.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Cover, there are several former policemen in here whose peace has been disturbed many times. Just so you know.
Okay.
There's several elected officials up here whose peace has been disturbed numerous Again, I want to be clear that the request from the citizen, and I'm not saying this is the only citizen who's ever contacted us about this, this was a citizen that contacted us with an idea of a potential solution that seemed fairly reasonable. I always say, all of our laws are there for us to voluntarily comply with. Certainly, we have to have a method of enforcement, which we do. I know in my neighborhood, and I'm sure in your neighborhood, you know exactly who it is, who is disturbing the peace in this manner. But by the time you call one of our police officers and say, oh my gosh, this is going on, they get there, they don't witness it happening, and it is a very difficult thing to do. Now, this allows, if I understand you correctly, if my peace is disturbed, I can report it. If I'm willing to come to court and testify with my neighbors, my whomever, and say, this is happening, you know, this is the vehicle, this is when it's happening, then there would be a potential opportunity to make that behavior stop.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So you're not going to, like, the police officers aren't going to be out proactively enforcing that? Is that basically?
Correct. We would respond to a call for service, and then it would be incumbent on the complainant to sign a GOS, just like it would be for a normal peace disturbance. As Mr. Cover pointed out, our, statutorily, our peace cannot be disturbed, as you well know.
Right. And so that brings up just another question, not kind of unrelated. Do you have an ordinance, like, in effect, like, because I've stopped cars for not having a catalytic converter, I mean, I'm assuming you have a, do you have a separate ordinance for something like that?
We do, for defective equipment, yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Ordinance fails. Okay, this takes us to our first readings.
Bill number 22-022, an ordinance vacating all existing unconstructed right-of-way of all that part of Blue Ridge Mountain View, a subdivision in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Bill number 22-023, an ordinance annexing a contiguous and compact area of land consisting of a portion of the right-of-way of Old Lexington Road located generally west of US-24 Highway and east of North Bay Avenue in unincorporated Jackson County, Missouri, into the corporate limits of the City of Independence, Missouri, and authorizing and directing the city clerk to do those things necessary to accomplish said action. Bill number 22-024, an ordinance authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed $85 million from the Missouri Development Finance Board to refinance the cost of certain projects related to the city's electric system, approving the form of and authorizing the execution of a financing agreement with the Missouri Development Finance Board and prescribing other matters relating thereto. Bill number 22-025, an ordinance approving rezoning from District C2, General Commercial to District R12 PUD, two-family residential planned unit development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the property southwest of Salem Drive, east of Bay Avenue, north of US-24 Highway, in Independence, Missouri. Bill number 22-026, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at 909 West Waldau Avenue, Independence, Missouri. Bill number 22-027, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction and grading easements, and general utility easements for the Sub-K rebuild project, project number 201706, authorizing the negotiation and imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payments of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Bill number 22-028, an ordinance creating a charter amendment advisory board to consist of nine members to be appointed by the city council, defining the purposes and duties of said board and objectives sought to be accomplished, and further providing for the organization and plan of operation of said board.
Okay, thank you very much. This takes us to our council member comments. I'll start on my left with Councilman Hobart.
Very briefly, I just wanted to let everybody know that on behalf of my friend and colleague, Karen DeLucy, she was very sorry she couldn't attend the meeting tonight. She rarely misses, and it's her favorite thing to do, just like it's Bob Sorensen's favorite thing to do.
Right.
Which is why they never miss. So she recently had a treatment and was particularly not feeling well as a result, and so that's why she wasn't able to be here tonight. So that's it. And I appreciate, one more thing, I guess, interim Chief Dustman, sounds like you're just the thing we needed, to have a police chief that's interested in the budget. So thank you.
Councilman Steinmeier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This week, or last week, there was quite a few folks that are reaching out about their winter utility bills being higher than their gas bills. And I'm one of those that has experienced that, too. First time I can remember that my utilities is higher than gas during the winter months. You kind of look forward to the reprieve of going up in gas and down in our electric gas, our electric water and sewer. It was quite the buzz in social media. I got several questions asked of me why it was. I know we're probably not going to get immediate answers, but I think it's something that they would love to hear us discuss and try to figure out why it seems to be. And the other issue that they have, that I read and I said I would ask about, is, once again, long wait times on hold, calling in, you can't get through, you can't talk to someone. And it's not that they're complaining about the personnel that they end up talking to, they find that they're helpful, it's just getting to them. And we've talked about this, I've been here almost two years, and we have talked and talked and talked. At some point, we've got to get serious in solving the frustration of our IPO customers' wait times, and I'm hoping that we can do that. I know there's phone systems out there that could really eliminate a lot of this frustration, like, if you don't wish to wait on hold, your number's in the queue, you won't lose your place in line, we'll call you back. I love that. I can call just about any place else, and I don't have to wait on hold, I always get that option, and it's quick and it's efficient, and they call me back. And I think, I think it would serve IPO well if we would investigate that, look into it. I think customers deserve that, and I would hope that we can have a serious discussion on that in a study session soon, if we could.
Thank you, Councilman. Let me sit down with staff and jump into those and report back to the council.
Much appreciated. And we do have an election tomorrow, so I'd like for everybody to get out and vote, so.
Councilman, yes, I'm sorry, you're done? Councilman Huff?
Yes, I just had one thing. I was out there by 54th Street Bar and Grill out at Arrowhead and 39th, and I was mind-boggled by seeing 37 poles sticking in the air down there, two circuits, or actually four circuits coming out of Sub-K, coming down the road, and then dipping down at 39th Street. That system was put in, the underground system, and that was deemed to be underground out there 35, 40 years ago, millions and millions of dollars. We go out here and we fight the cell towers, not to put cell towers down along that road, along Little Blue, and now we have 37 50-foot poles out there. I just, just having a real hard time seeing that happen out there. And besides that, when they come in and did all the tree removals and stuff to get this circuit up there, they cut all the trees off of coals that we tell people they have to plant trees in order to be in business here in this city. They shot them straight up and down, looks atrocious out there. But beyond that, when they come out of the substation, they took out a pretty good amount of trees, went out there and looked at this thing, and trash piled up, it looked like a homeless camp down in where they've cut all these trees up. It'd be really nice if our city property at least tried to keep that picked up out there. But I would like to figure out why we have poles in the air out there after fighting that, whenever you get a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things. Last Thursday, it was my honor to be a part of the McCoy Academic Award, award for the Independent School District. That was great to be able to see the young achievements that were taking place. They did it for the past two years because of COVID, so it was fun to be a part of that. And then also, Mr. City Manager and Acting Chief Dustman, I was out speaking with some constituents yesterday and filled a couple phone calls today. It's good weather, so that means ATVs are out running around. And to you, Mr. Heidi, that Fairmont Park and up through there, scare it. So I know you guys have a lot on your plate, so be cognitive. If you see something hard to catch, I get it, up in Fairmont area, Kentucky Hills, all through there. So passing the word on to you for that, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stewart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to tell everybody to make sure they vote tomorrow, but Councilmember Steinmeier stole my thunder, so just let your voice be heard tomorrow, go vote, thank you.
Yes, lots of important things on the ballot tomorrow. Mr. City Manager, anything else this evening?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, he's picking up his cup. Who's voting, who's rooting for KU tonight? Who's not voting, rooting for KU tonight?
M.I.Z.
Okay, we are adjourned.